I'm calling the meeting to order.
Sorry.
Uh, we are actually reconvening from November tenth, so I think we are gonna save, according to the agenda, our pledge and roll call for, uh, well, we should probably at least do a roll call, right? Yes, let's do a roll call, but we'll save the pledge, uh, for our new mayor. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilperson Bentley.
Yes.
Bruns.
Yes.
Flynn.
Here.
Here.
Morrissey.
Here.
Soha.
Present.
Stuccio.
Here.
Wolfram.
Here.
Here, before Tom.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our one item of business, which is the oath of office for our new mayor, Scott Sessions. Believe clerk is going to administer, yes, okay, thank you.
I solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Michigan, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Hillsdale to the best of my knowledge and ability, so hold me, God.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Well, hello everyone, um, I guess we gotta go into the public comment on non-agenda items only, um, from the November tenth meeting. Also, there are two more opportunities for the public to speak tonight, so the podium is now open.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comment? If not, then I will go ahead and close the public comment and do I have a, can I entertain a motion to adjourn the November tenth meeting?
Come hope.
I have a motion by councilman, um, William Morrissey, and who seconded it?
Right.
Right, um, councilman Sol outside of it. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has it, so November tenth meeting is now closed. Now I will call an order and for the pleasure of allegiance, when everybody stands in the pleasure of allegiance of the United States.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Okay, I wanna welcome everyone to the next city council meeting, um, of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, um, the Hillsdale City Council meeting. May I have a roll call vote? City Clerk Price.
Yes. Councilperson Bruns.
Here.
Uh, Flynn.
Still here.
Morrissey.
Here.
Soha.
Present.
Stuccio.
Here.
Wolfram.
Here.
Mayor Scott Sessions.
Here.
And Councilperson Bentley.
Here.
All present.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, Kate. Mr. Fry.
You know I'm here.
Josh, present.
Here.
Okay, thanks. I'm present.
Thank you. Okay, we will go into the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any changes or to make to the agenda? Yes.
Um, we, uh, reappointed Felicia Finch to a second full term on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, according to the minutes that I have. Motion by member Soha, seconded by Stuccio to approve reappointment of Mary Margaret Spiteri, Felicia Finch, and Margaret Brown to the Tifa board. And she was first appointed in twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty-one, so I think she already has her second full term.
Um.
Unless I'm making a mistake.
So you can have your back.
Um, yes, I'd like to have Mr. Fry come up, um, he has some information on that. John, um, Mayor Protam, if you remember, um, we had that issue with a liquor license and she had to resign her position.
Oh.
In order to be considered for, it's all like Sam.
Oh, okay, it said resignation, reappointment, I thought that was from an earlier, uh, oh, thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, as Dave said, so she was reappointed to the start of her second term due to, uh, Tifa having to get the liquor license transferred back from CL Real Estate. She couldn't serve on the Tifa board because she has an interest in a manufacturer's license. And so she was, she had to step down for Tifa to do that. And so it was, um, the, the liquor attorney, their opinion was she had to step down while the license was being transferred. Once it was received and in the possession of Tifa, she could, you know, basically apply to resume her seat on the board. And so that was her intention, you know, she talked with, uh, Chair Gelsner from Tifa about that. And so this would be basically a partial term replacement for her to resume her seat.
Okay, oh, interesting. She couldn't just recuse herself? Okay, nothing further.
Okay, so, do I have an approval for the agenda? Can I entertain a motion? Support, I have a motion by councilman Morrissey and supported by councilman Soha. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, we have an agenda. We'll open up the public comment on agenda items only, please limit your comments to three minutes, um, please tell us your name and your address. The podium is now open.
Jonathan McAllen from Ward Three on South Street. Um, wanted to just speak very briefly, I looked over the agenda to the, the fair committee, I really appreciate the work that went into this, I'm assuming it was, um, Mayor Sessions that kind of put together, um, the idea to reconvene this committee, um, which is, I really appreciate, one of the things that I came and spoke a little bit about in the last city council meeting, um, was the impact of potential new state funding sources on special assessments, and I, I noticed that that was mentioned in the pack, so I really appreciate that. Um, and I think, I, I, I really appreciate the purpose to, um, in thinking how to, you know, alleviate the financial burden on Hillsdale citizens and figure out the best way forward to funding infrastructure improvements. I did wanna note a couple of things. Um, the, um, I just had a couple ideas just based on what I saw. I was curious that, like, there are, so there are thirteen city government representatives on the fair committee. Um, there's a designated representative of Hillsdale College, of Hillsdale Community Schools, and of Hillsdale Hospital, um, all of which I think are, well, the college and the hospital are both nonprofits, and the community schools don't have to pay special assessments either. So I was kinda curious about that particularly when put in balance of there are only five members of the general, general public that are included on the fair committee. I was curious if there's a possibility of increasing that number. Um, I, I'd love to participate, I'm sure I could probably find a dozen other folks around town that, um, are concerned about the way that this, the policy and the, the way that we're dealing with paying for infrastructure, I'm sure there'd be a lot of interest. Um, I, you know, I got the letter from the city, I don't know when this was, it was about a month ago, with some boards and committees that you have opportunities to serve on, I'm sure if, like, if this had been listed, if this were something that the public were more aware of, I bet there'd be a lot of interest in how, you know, how do we solicit more public interest and participation in things like this? Um, so that's, that's one, that's one thing I was thinking about, like, and particularly, like, you know, could you think about both people who've been in past assessment districts as well as potential future districts, like, is that something that could be considered in, in terms of who you would bring in from the general public? Um, and then just a couple of things, I think, one of the, one of the aspects of fairness that I think is really important to think about is not just, you know, how to be, how do you, how are you fair to the residents that have already paid a special assessment? But also, like, how can you craft your policy to attract more people to live and work in the city of Hillsdale? Because if you have somebody, you know, who's from living in Jackson or Spring Harbor or something like that, with Adrian, and they're thinking about moving here, but then they hear like, well, you know, you might have to pay a special assessment because we're trying to, you know, to get your road fixed because we're trying to be fair to the people who paid him five or ten or fifteen years ago, even though the city has potentially enough money to fix the roads without it, then you might shrug your shoulders and say, eh, I'll live in the township, I'll live somewhere else, not, and pass up an opportunity to come here. So just a couple of things I think I'd really encourage the council and city manager and everybody involved to think about, so, thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, Penny Swan Board for, I'm speaking on the fair committee also, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great idea that everybody on council is on it. Um, that way we can have open transparency and no secrets since people keep, seem to think there's secrets going on. And as far as the four hundred thousand dollars we're supposed to get from the state, we don't know if that's yearly, and four hundred thousand dollars doesn't go very far when you're doing roads and infrastructure. If you look it up, probably eight years ago, the number was a million dollars a mile for the infrastructure. So, I think a lot of people have the misconception that five thousand dollars is paying for the road, it's not, it's a percentage. The city's getting money elsewhere, so the four hundred thousand dollars is great. You know, we, we'll take all the money we can get, but it's not gonna do the deed and cover all of our roads. So I applaud city manager Mackey and the mayor for reinstating the fair committee because we do want to stake the residents all the money we can and get any funding we can, so, awesome job, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let's stick, I'll stick off with the, uh, topic of the fair committee, uh, a couple of comments, first, kind of bigger picture. Um, I kind of see this as an opportunity for council and city manager to take responsibility off themselves, although they, although they will be on the, on the committee themselves. But take direct responsibility off ourselves and put it on a large group of other people, uh, you know. Also, uh, I just wanna go down, down the list of some of these, uh, per, uh, possible people who will be on this committee. Um, and point out that many of them, the different, um, oppo, different people might not live in the city. Alright, I mean, so let's start with the top, and I'm not gonna name names and, you know, pretend I know where everyone lives, 'cause I don't. But, um, we can start at the top, Economic Development Corporation, I don't think that board requires people on that board to live in the city. Uh, same with Tifa, um, although I will mention I would greatly value Drew Gelsner's opinion, and if, if this does happen, that he would be on this. Um, also, a quick note on Tifa, my understanding of Tifa is that they take their own, the tax money from their area and, uh, and use it for their own purposes, which might work, work out fine, but it doesn't benefit the roads necessarily. Uh, next on down, Board of Public Utilities, my understanding is most of that board is not city residents. Uh, next one down, Hillsdale College Designated Representatives, that quite possibly could be a city resident, depending on whoever they decide to put on there. Hillsdale Community School Superintendent, or the Designated Representative, again, not necessarily a city resident. Um, Hillsdale Hospital Chief Executive Officer, again, not necessarily a city resident. And then the last part, five members of the, of the public, one, the mayoral selection at large, it doesn't say anything about being a city resident, although I'd like to assume he would appoint a city resident. And then finally, at the end, one city resident from each of the four boards. Uh, so I think you get my point, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? All.
Jack McLean, fourteen forty-five, South Bun Road. Um, I wanna speak about, uh, uh, Tifa board appointment of, uh, Mr. Sumner. I know he's been on the board before. Um, I read through all of the minutes that I could find on the Tifa, I didn't see where he was recommended by the Tifa board anyplace. There's a lot of newer people doing business in the town that owns businesses and buildings, which would, I think, fit the board a lot better maybe to get some new ideas. I mean, from what I read in his application, he had been a board member and president for years. Um, one of his big outstanding things, I think, is, and maybe I'm wrong, was like the purchase of the Kiefer House and the Don Theater, so, you know, I'm not sure if that's good or bad, I guess. Uh, I just think that appointment could be maybe looked at a little bit better and put out there that you do want someone else on the Tifa board. I wasn't thinking there was even any vacancies available on the Tifa board, but I don't know, thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Okay, seeing that, I'll close the podium, and then we'll move into the consent agenda. I have approvals of bills of claims and BPU claims of October thirty of twenty twenty-five, one million, sixty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Payroll of November sixth, twenty twenty-five, two hundred thousand, two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. City council minutes of November third, twenty twenty-five, city council minutes of November tenth, twenty twenty-five, finance minutes of November third, twenty twenty-five, and annoyance variance Hillsdale College Funding Fest. Um, may I have a roll call vote? City Clerk Price. Oh, yeah, you need a motion, so. Yep, so move, okay, support. Sports, I forgot that. Oh, uh, okay, I have a motion by councilperson Morrissey and, um, um, seconded by councilperson Soha. May I have a roll call vote? City Clerk Price.
Yes, Councilperson Flynn.
Yes.
Uh, Morrissey.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
Stuccio.
Yes.
Wolfram.
Yes.
L D O.
Yes.
Mayor Sessions.
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley.
Yes.
And Bruns.
Yes.
Nine zero, it's approved.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we'll move into, um, communications petitions, a Comcast letter, um, it's there for everyone to read in the packet, um, so I won't go over that. Um, next we have police chief, um, Scott Hebner's resignation, okay? There's a, that is a notification in the packet, city manager Mackey from, and Laura Sargent of Human Resources, November sixth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the letter is an official retirement notification to the city, my last day with, of employment will be December first, twenty twenty-five, regards to Scott Hebner. Okay, as stated in his letter, Chief Hebner has notified the city of Hillsdale that he plans to retire after thirty-eight years of dedicated service to our community. I know that there is some questions about how I plan to fill this upcoming vacancy since it's a mayoral appointment. Last week I spoke to Chief Hebner and asked him if he would consider staying a while longer to give us time to find his replacement, and so that he could be involved in that process. He graciously agreed to stay through the beginning of February, and I thank him for delaying his retirement to serve just a bit longer and ensure a stable transitional leadership for the police department and the fire department. His my intentions to work closely with Chief Hebner, city manager Mackey, human resources director Laura Sargent, and the council's public safety committee to undertake a comprehensive search process to identify quali- qualified candidates. I am committed to a fair and transparent hiring process, one that considers both internal and external candidates with the goal of making sure that we select the right person for this critically important job. Is there any council comments? Yes, and Soha.
Just wanted to say thank you, Chief Hebner, for, uh, your thirty-eight years of dedication to our community, I think that's a remarkable act of service, and I admire it.
Yes.
I'd just like to hang with that as well, I thank you for hanging on for a little while until we can get your replacement, that's very important, thank you.
I also, no, I also wanna say that he's just done a wonderful job, uh, for a number of years and very thankful that he has assisted, is gonna assist you in finding a, a suitable replacement.
You know, it's, it's not every day that you have somebody work their way up from patrol officer to chief of police, and it shows his dedication not only to the department but to the city as well, so, Scott, thank you very much for that.
Thank you for your service, and, um, I get the feeling you'll miss us less than we miss you.
Chief Hebner, would you come up and say a few words for us, you know, the, the council after that?
Good evening, and thank you for those words, I appreciate that. Um, it was harder to retire than I thought. Um, typing the letter was fine, hitting the send button was a little more difficult. Um, but after meeting with Mayor Sessions and city manager Mackey last week, I didn't answer them that day. Um, I met with my lieutenant, we took stock in what really needed to happen with the department, so the next couple of months, and there is a lot to do, um, we need to find some more recruits with the police department, uh, we're going into the capital improvement plan for the department citywide. Uh, budget process starts in January, our, my executive administrative assistant's never been through that process, whoever comes in to replace me has never been through that process here. So, when we processed it down like that, it was more of an easy, an easier decision for me to hang on a couple more months to get us through those processes or to assist somebody else getting through those processes for the future so that, um, they can excel in that. I never had the intentions of leaving the city holding the bag in a couple of different areas, um, or making somebody else responsible for those, so, um, I'm fine with doing that, uh, there was no issue there. Um, as I told you, Mr. Bentley, I, even if you were gonna be mayor, um, that I was gonna leave about a month after that. So, I had made my dis- decision before, um, appreciate the work, so you will see me again. Probably.
Thank you, Chief Hebner, um, uh, Councilman Bentley?
Yes, thank you, chief, for your great service for almost four decades. Um, so you'll stay until February?
I, I, I don't have a hard date. We'll get through this process, um, the budget process starts in January, and usually requested budgets have to be submitted to the city. Last couple of years, about, about the end of the first week of February, I'll make sure that process is all done and submitted. Um, capital improvement plan should be submitted prior to that, but the police department, their mandatory annual reporting to the state takes place in January and February, and again, um, the administrative assistant that takes care of that for the department's never been through that process either. So, the lieutenant and I sat down and come up with our work for the next couple of months, and that's what our focus is gonna be, to get through all of that and bring people up to speed on doing that that need to.
No, that's very gracious of you, 'cause I know how excited you were to begin your retirement, so thank you for staying, and I hope there's an opportunity, and maybe we need to make a budget amendment or whatever, that you, you can, uh, transition with your replacement for a couple of weeks or whatever, just to make sure he's fully up to speed, but again, thank you very much, chief.
Council comment, or? Thank you, chief, I really appreciate you staying on for a while. Okay, now we have, um, Hillsdale County Commissioner update, Doug Ingles.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, city manager. Our update tonight has a few items. At our recent Board of Commissioners meeting last Monday, we heard from Mary Beth Leonard, Lifeways CEO, that financing the local bank was not approved, and also the application for federal grant was not approved. Their facilities committee has recommended the new building be put on hold, the next Lifeways board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday at their location in Jackson. Grant spending has been approved by the DNR trust fund that, um, our recreation, uh, director, um, Mike Wirth talked about last week. Uh, the DNR trust fund was approved, the Board of Commissioners also approved a resolution to begin spending at Lewis Emery Park. The county's match is eighty-nine thousand eight hundred, the total grant is three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Another item, the fee schedule at the clerk's office has been updated, maximums are set by statute. Hillsdale County's fees are lower than the state statute. We did a cost of living adjustment of two point seven percent, approved for electeds and for the county pay schedule in our last board meeting as well. And for the city, uh, it's important to know that twenty twenty-six dog licenses will only be available at the treasurer's office. No sale at townships or cities due to moving the process to online, the online is not ready to go yet, so licenses must be purchased at the county treasurer's office. And that completes my update for tonight, if you have any questions, I may have to answer, is there, yes, sir?
Councilman Flynn.
On the, uh, Lifeways issue then?
Yes.
If their building has been put on hold, does that put the county's plans to move over to Care Drive on hold as well, or are you still plowing ahead?
We're plowing ahead, here's the deal that, that, that we have that is, um, you know, set very firmly, is that in October of twenty twenty-eight, the Emmett's Building must be vacated for district court. The process of, um, the timeline and the process of preparing and making sure that we are ready to go, if we have options, there's a one-year plan, and there's a two-year plan. The two-year plan, and either plan that we use requires twenty-five Care Drive.
Right.
So twenty-five Care Drive is still the destination for, um, the court or for some shuffling of offices in order to accommodate all the space required um, between the, the historic courthouse and what will be moving from district court. Twenty-five Care Drive is still gonna be renovated or remodeled. Um, we have architect drawings in, in process right now. I expect, like, I think I've mentioned, in the next, um, two weeks, we should have those plans for, uh, twenty-five Care Drive. So the, the, the short answer to your question is, yes, we're moving forward, even though there's been certain changes that regard Lifeways.
So if you are moving forward and Lifeways is on hold, where does Lifeways go then as you move forward? Because you really can't renovate a building if they're still there, correct?
Right, so we have a lease that goes to twenty thirty that we just signed to the Board of Commissioners and Lifeways. In that lease, there's a six-month, um, escape clause, so, so to speak, that Lifeways can provide to the county, or the county can provide to Lifeways. So that six months, at some point, when we get to crunch time, so to speak, when that moment happens, um, notice will be given, I fully expect, and s- six months later, Lifeways will have another location. We still wanna have Lifeways, um, find their, their, their good spot, they've spoken about a variety of, of opportunities. Uh, one opportunity is to do it in stages. I expect that they, and they know full well that the county needs that building. So, I can't speak for Lifeways, but I can speak for the plans that we're doing, and that is moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yep?
Questions for?
Thank you. Thank you for the update, Professor. Did the bank give a reason for the loan denial that was made, uh, public to you?
I was, I told them.
Thank you.
More questions? Seven, no? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ingles.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay, we do not have any introductions or adoptions, mm, to ordinance or public hearing. Uh, no old business, so we'll move into new business, M.DOT Performance Resolution, um, for November seventeenth. Um, may I have Mr. Blake, reporting?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city manager. Um, this, this item is an angle item that comes before council, as is required by M.DOT as part of our annual application for a maintenance contract through M.DOT. Um, as this is kind of new for everyone, I'll, I'll go ahead and read it if you don't mind. Um, each year is necessary for the city to adopt a resolution, which is required by the Michigan Department of Transportation for the purpose of issuing individual permits to use its nine, M ninety-nine rights away within city boundaries. The Department of Public Services, Board of Public Utilities, Police Department, Fire Department require use of the right way from time to time. Street needs, special assessments, or special events, etc. Street needs, special assessments, or special events, etc. The closed for council review is the Performance Resolution from Ms. Pelles. A proud approval, this resolution authorizes the direct pure DPS, Department of Public Utilities, and the Assistant City Manager to apply for an annual maintenance permit in addition to permits for various uses throughout the year. Staff recommends to approve the resolution as per.
Is there any questions, Mr. Blake? So may I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution which is requiring from the Michigan State Department for purposes of issuing individual permits to use its M-99 right away within the city boundaries?
So moved.
Motioned by council. Morrissey and supported by councilman Soha. May I have?
Roll call vote.
Yes, Councilperson Morrissey.
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Caladino?
Yes.
Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Bronz?
Yes.
Enclon?
Yes.
It's nine zero approved, Resolution three six five six.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. We'll move into new business. Hillsdale County Equalization Department renewal and contract for GIS mapping services. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So you have in front of you a contract with the Hillsdale County Equalization Department. Since twenty thirteen, the city has partnered with the county on a contractual basis to provide GIS services for us, including updating our parcel maps and providing our mapping software and system. These are three-year contract terms. We do this along with, I believe, every township in the county as well. So we all work through the Equalization Office to do that. Part of the contract also covers, every five years, they do an aerial flyover and that helps provide new updated aerial imagery that goes with all of those maps. So anytime you have a transaction, property transaction in the city, you have a deed, it's got a legal description and so there's some pretty complex math that the software takes care of to make sure those boundaries are accurate and that the tax descriptions are accurate. So that's part of this contract. I noted that the fee schedule was in there, but not the exact dollar amount. I figured we're curious, so it is three thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars last year. So it's far more economical for the city to do this through the county than to bring on a person, a staff person to do this.
Okay, is there any council questions for Mr. Frye? Mayor Proton, Kelly?
Thank you. Are there any alternatives, do any other companies provide this service?
I don't know that there are a lot of private companies that would do it. It's really a function of whether your, you know, local assessor's office does it or, you know, you partner with, you know, another local jurisdiction, in this case, the county. I know in talking to Kim that like the software alone to do this would cost more than the thirty-three hundred dollars, so.
Thank you.
That's why we've done it for the last, you know, going on thirteen years or so.
Okay, any more questions? Senator, thank you, Mr. Frye. May I entertain a motion to approve the contract for the renewal for the period commencing January first to twenty-twenty-sixth and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight? And the clerk in the mail out, Mayor Orth Matt, Orth authorized to sign the agreement. Sorry about that.
So moved.
All right, all right, I got it. Motion by Councilperson Flynn, supported by Councilperson Morrissey. May I have a roll call vote, City Clerk Price?
Yes, Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Caladino?
Yes.
Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Bronz?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Yes.
That's approved.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go into item, new business, reforming the fund alternative identifications and recommendation fair committee. When I ran for mayor, one of the priorities was bringing back the fair committee. The purpose of reforming this committee is simple, to evaluate every funding option available so that we can continue making long-term progress on road repairs and infrastructure. It has been nearly ten years since the fair committee last met and much has changed since then. The city has made meaningful improvements with the use of special assessments districts and local road monies, but we still have significant needs and limited resources. Now it is the right time to take a fresh look at our approach. We have three road projects in design that will come before council in January. We need to act now so that these projects are not delayed. With these projects coming up, now is the time to pause, look carefully at our current funding mechanisms and determine whether there should still be, whether they are still the best tools for the job or whether adjustments should be made. Step one is solving any challenge is understanding the problem. The fair committee will allow us to clarify, clearly identify our infrastructure needs, review what has worked well, what is not working, and openly discuss what tools or policies will help us move forward more effectively. This is not an advisory committee, not a decision-making body. Council retains full authority to make any and all decisions. The fair committee's role is simply to gather information, explore options, and present recommendations. The purpose, the proposed membership is intentionally brought to increase public representation and input. The fair committee membership structure I am proposing is similar to the twenty-sixteen committee membership. However, this time, I want to include all the elected members of council and have more public input. More than half of this committee would be members of the public and their elected representatives, ensuring that the people have a voice. The committee will be streamlined and I would like all the positions filled by December first meeting. Is there any questions?
Yes, Councilman Morrissey?
I take the point that the gentleman made and during the public comment about residency in the city. I suggest that perhaps we could amend this, if we do do it, amend this so that the various members go all be residents of the city. Hillsdale College would be, and et cetera. All those people would be residents of the city. I think that's only fair, so to speak.
Okay.
I agree with that, but just with a little caveat. We were discussing Berry Street earlier this year. I do know that a few of the property owners, because they were rental properties, a few of the property owners live outside the city. So, I mean, you gotta kinda, I think, weigh that in a little bit too, that not every property owner on the city street actually lives in town. So does that make a, does that throw a, you know, something?
I, since there aren't a huge number of people on this board to begin with, I would prefer them to be residents and taxpayers of the city. This is my thought.
I guess the question would then be for the lawyer then, is that, is that legal? Can we stipulate that in whatever wording we come up with? That the people on this committee must be city residents?
Yes, for purposes of that committee, you could include anyone you wanted to for that particular type of thing.
Sure. Okay. Councilman Soha?
I'd just like to add though that there are many business owners that Mr. Joshua Kup, that owns the big dealership there, he doesn't live in the city, but he's one of the largest taxpayers in the city. And he has voiced to me frustration that he has had no opportunity for voice on committees or council here because he's not a resident, so. That's a consideration that I think we should entertain.
Councilman, Mayor, Tom Proton, Kelly?
Josh's, yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Yeah, I agree with Councilman Morrissey and we've had this debate before and I just think the cleanest principle is that if you are exercising any advisory or political power over the city, it's ideal that they be residents because, you know, lots of people have businesses in Ohio or, and they live in Michigan. Not lots, but I think political power needs to be tightly connected to residency. So I agree with Councilman Morrissey. I'm curious, what were your criteria, what's your methodology for selecting these institutions?
I just wanted, you know, I wanted all representation from council, okay, and myself. And then I also wanted, you know, people from, you know, like, like the hospital, you know, like businesses that are associated with the city, you know, because they do. They, they, I've had so many businesses say, I don't have, I can't say anything. You know, I, you know, I don't, I can't vote, I can't do this. So I would rather, you know, you be on a committee like this, you know, to be able to speak than, than, and that would give me representation where they haven't felt like they haven't had it before.
Yeah, I totally get that and I think that's just a disagreement, you know, in principle about who should have representation. But in terms of Hillsdale College, Hillsdale Community Schools, what was the metric for those specific institutions?
Just getting leaders, you know, from the community, you know.
Yeah, I guess my concern there at Hillsdale College, it's a large taxpayer, but, you know, tax exempt. Hillsdale Hospital, tax exempt, Hillsdale Community Schools, tax exempt. And I just wonder, you know, Meyer, Hillsdale Terminal, these are some of the largest taxpayers in the city and they're not tax exempt. I just wonder if there was a more, a criterion that would incorporate all this. I get that Hillsdale College and Hillsdale Hospital in many ways are the face of the city and maybe rightfully so, but that's kinda my concern on that front, that it's, it's a little bit heavy on the nonprofit tax exempt side of things.
Okay, all right.
You mentioned you wanted these positions filled hopefully by December first. Do you have a timeline after that, that you would like a recommendation by the fair committee by a certain date? Are you looking at doing this in a month, two months, six months?
Yeah, I'd like to have like a special meeting maybe in the, in the second week of December to get this going. Okay, so that's why I was shooting for December first, trying to get the positions filled, so. Yes, Councilman Bentley?
I think Dr. Morrissey and I maybe can agree on one ward member, but I'm not sure that all the pairs of councilmen from the various wards are gonna agree on one person. So maybe we should consider each of us making one. And another thing I might mention is, I think we should also include somehow a South Street, a Oak Street, and a Berry Street person specifically, since those were the current and recent special assessment targets.
Okay, thank you. This Councilman's.
I agree with that, but with that said, we have a list through twenty-third that was presented at a meeting here a couple of meetings ago. So, I mean, if you're gonna think that, you might as well have somebody from Reading Avenue as well, Arch Avenue, you know, one of the representatives from the industrial park out there. I mean, you might as well, if you're gonna do that, you might as well have somebody from everybody on that list because this is gonna affect all of those people.
Thank you, I agree. And I, and I agree with what was said earlier, that more citizens, fewer powers of need. I think we'd like to hear from the citizens. So to include all those would be good, but this would soon get to be a committee of dozens, so. And I, so I, I don't know. But I, I don't know how we're gonna decide all these things. We're gonna do all this tonight? Are we gonna have motions and amendments and what does this look like?
Well, right now, this is just being presented, okay, for approval. Okay, so, you know, we can work this through right now if you want to or we can actually put it back to a committee and have it done, but I would like to have it done quicker, quickly, you know. I just, you know, that's.
Which, which committee would this fall under, Mr. Mayor?
I would say probably DPS or, or, I mean, Mr.
Public Services.
Public Services, yeah. But I, I wanna get going on this because, you know, we do have time when these roads are gonna be done. So, and we gotta move on, so that's why.
Councilman Morrissey? I do agree with that, we can't allow this to become a huge committee. You know, it's just not gonna, it won't work if you put all these different people on there. As far as putting people on the different streets, if, if we're gonna set a policy, then it's gonna be for all of the streets in the future. And, you know, so I'm a little bit worried about adding street reference residents. And it just seems to me unwieldy if we get many more than, than, than what we have right here. So all I'm saying, I think the, the number that you have is, is good.
Okay, Mayor Proton, Kelly?
Yeah, I do think in particular, I agree that this would get very unwieldy, but in particularly, the one member from each of the city's four wards, like Rob and I are kind of on the opposite side of the SAB question. Not that we couldn't find someone reasonable, but ultimately, you're gonna have to pick someone who's either in favor of the current way it's done or is open to reform and that's, that's gonna make it kinda hard to, to decide, I think. Yeah.
Councilman Bentley?
Yeah, it seems to me twenty-one is already an unwieldy number and I'm not sure, maybe you could say a little more about what this committee is intended to do. We're maxed out on villages, the SADS is a front burner issue that we should, I don't know how a twenty-one person committee is, is gonna address that because ultimately, the, the property owners on those special assessment districts are, are gonna veto it or not. So I'm not sure the, the exact purpose of this committee. And, I mean, it, it seems like one of the, somebody said from the podium, it's, we're, why can't we do it ourselves in committee and in this body? And if there is gonna be a committee, I would suggest broadening it, that there's like a standing road committee of, of citizens that know and have strong opinions about not just the funding, but the choosing of the roads and the, the fixes, the particular fixes. Because right now, it's, it seems to be just staff, you know, comes up with whatever they do and we, it's not clear to us how they pick them. There's just a lot, citizen engagement is, would be a good thing to do, but as far as the specific funding, I mean, we're gonna get what we get from the state, we get what we get from the villages. We got this special assessment struggle. So I'm not sure twenty-one or thirty-one, I'm not sure what the point of the meeting is. Of course, elections have consequences and I applaud your initiative to find a solution to these problems, but it doesn't, you know, the question of who's on it and how many are on it, kinda begs the question of what's it supposed to do?
Okay, thank you. City Manager Maggie?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to kinda up, give the council an update on the first fair committee. As was said by Mayor Sessions, that was done about nine years ago and we had a cross-section of folks from the community, business people, residents, council members that were on that committee. And the idea behind that was looking at, kind of, through the process was looking at where we stood first, identifying, you know, what our condition was in the roads, what funding mechanisms were out there on which to address the problem. And the committee looked at how, what they felt in coalescence around, what they felt was the best, best course of action to address the problem that was repairing the roads in the city. So it was the committee who made a recommendation to the full council, looking at special assessments, looking at the dedicated road village, searching out grants and those things all came, came from a recommendation from that committee. And, and talking to Mayor Sessions and looking at what we've been able to accomplish. to Mayor Sessions, um, and looking at what we've been able to accomplish over the last nine years, um, I would say that one could say that's been fairly successful in financing projects, now is there room for improvement, there's always room for improvement, um, but, um, you know, we have a certain number of tools to address the problem, we have a certain size of problem, and we have a length of time that we wanna address it, and those are the things that I see us presenting, um, and, and where Hillsdale stands within that, uh, um, data set, and I see that's where we can start off with the committee, is everyone understanding, you know, how big the problem is, what funding we have for it, and then how we progress, um, to make the best course of actions. If eliminating and reducing special assessments ultimately is recommended, and council adopts that, that's how we move forward, it, it's so, truly is, you know, just an opportunity to review the funding sources we have, the structure, and deciding the best course of action, um, to move forward, um, with the data, um, you know, we can, in those meetings, you know, everyone will be afforded the opportunity to ask questions, um, the staff will be at your beck and call for this process, and then let all of you decide how to move forward, and then once you give us their direction, whether it's amend the special assessment districts, eliminate them, keep them, um, uh, you know, we're here to do what, you know, the majority of council directs us to do, so, that's really the purpose in this, um, and I would just say that, you know, if you, if the committee gets too large, um, then it will be unruly, um, not from an aggressive standpoint, it just be, will, will be hard to focus on, uh, necessarily a solution, uh, or something that people can coalesce around, it's not, uh, you know, not everybody is going to agree on how to move forward, but good people can make a, a decision for the best, I think, of a community, so.
Thank you, City Manager, um, but I'd just point out when, so the, so what came out of the one ten years ago, which of course, may have been necessary, uh, was special assessments and raising the millages, uh, our millages are tapped out for the foreseeable future, as far as I understand, so we're not gonna get that, we already have the SADS, uh, staff knows better than anybody how to get the grants, um, but what the people hear then, I would suggest, when you, when you say that, is we're looking for new, new funding from the people, and when they see the oligarchs of the college, and the hospital, and the schools, and EDC and TIFA, they grab their wallets for protection, because where else is the money gonna come from? If there were another source, you would've found it by now, so, again, I think the, the issue is special assessments, and this committee of twenty-one plus is only, only gonna obscure and confuse the situation, whereas this body and/or the residents of those two streets, uh, should just, you know, negotiate directly, but, again, both.
City Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Bentley, just to answer a couple of those questions, first, negotiating directly, our purpose, um, in, uh, local management, government management, is to treat everyone equally and fairly, negotiating with each individual party, um, would create, I don't wanna say some, so, some type of chaos, but, um, it would put the council in a position of picking winners and losers, um, what typically you like to see happen is you establish a policy that can be applied uniformly, uh, across the board, and you treat everyone the same, so that one person can't say, well, I paid five thousand, or I paid, um, somebody else say, oh, I paid two or less, um, if you have fair, fair criteria, that's all well and good, and I think, I truly believe that with what council's amendments or changes that were made, doing it by the front footage and accommodating smaller lots, that is, it, a pretty fair policy as far as administration, now council could still, um, decide to tweak that a little bit, that's up to you guys, um, but, um, I think limiting the number, uh, actually gets to a solution, um, you know, uh, live streaming it so others can watch it and educate themselves on it, and talk to their representatives, all of you, and their friends or associates would be good, um, I know one of the thing, the questions that came up was about the, you know, the, the hospital, and the, the college, and the school, you know, you also have to keep in mind that they are some of our, they are some of our largest, if not our largest employers, so they employ the majority of the folks here in the community, and, uh, you know, um, as far as special assessments, they do, just to be clear, they do pay special assessments, if there's a road that the college owns a property on, and it's fit, was in a special assessment, they've paid their share, same thing with the school, um, city pays its own special assessments, um, the hospital has paid theirs when we did those roads up there, so I, I just, I don't want anyone to think that they get, they don't, if they don't, if they're not paying taxes on certain properties, whether like it's at the college, they pay on some, and some they don't, um, if there's special assessments, they pay special assessments, all of them do, uh, so just wanted to make sure that that was clear, so, thank you.
Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor Sessions, um, this discussion has reminded me, um, this appears to be a duplication of efforts, um, it's, uh, I, I personally don't want to be a part of another committee, and, um, I, I don't, you know, we always get held to account about whispering in the dark, and now, you know, they ate all nine of us together outside of a council meeting on, you know, making discussions, it was the potential for people to misconstrue that, um, but we just had, this year, Public Services got together, um, we wrestled it out, we came up with the new guidelines, council unanimously approved it, I believe it was unanimous, and, um, it just appears to me, if, if we need to rehash this, we already have a committee, so maybe, um, we just get this back into Public Services, and then before the Public Services Committee meeting, maybe we just have a, what, what do you call it, a town hall here in the chamber, or wherever, and invite the whole community to come to the town hall with the specifics like we did with the road diet, with the specifics, hey, here's, here's the city's financial situation, here's why we adopted this in the teens to go forward with special assessments, here's where we are now, here's why we think we need it, or here's why we think, how we think we could adjust it, you know, bring us your ideas, and then Public Services could take all that, put it together, and, uh, that's an open meeting as well, right, so the community's invited to the Public Services meeting, and we're not forming a whole new meeting, a, a whole new committee in a short amount of time, and, you know, to, uh, Councilman Palladino's, you know, all the nonprofits that are here, um, you know, that, uh, the Councilman Bentley's, just the appearance of that, um, could have some connotations there, um, although I appreciate the, the, the theme or the, the desire there, um, but I, you know, as I've listened to the discussion tonight and think about it, I think it's a duplication of efforts, and I think we could have a, a town hall, and then at Public Services, address the, um, special assessments, 'cause it's obvious that that's the whole reason that this is coming together, so.
Councilman Bentley?
Uh, I hundred percent agree with everything, uh, Councilman Soha just said, and just to clarify, when I said negotiate, I didn't mean, you know, a room face to face, and then they've, they've shown their hand, now it's up to council to decide what the residential max is, that's how it looks to me, and then they can take it or leave it, I don't mean them like a back and forth, technical, I just mean broadly, so, anyway.
Councilman Bruns? Uh, great points, I think, Councilman Soha, and I, I'm fine with the Public Services idea, that sounds good to me, uh, I would also just throw out there that we could have a committee of the whole, or a special session, uh, if we wanted to address it more broadly, and then take it to Public Services, either way, I think there are a few options to do what you're talking about.
Mayor Procton, how do you know?
Yeah, I think I am also convinced by Councilman Soha's, uh, uh, points here, um, again, the problem though, is that the special assessment districts aren't necessarily discriminatory, I just don't know how we can get away from this, for example, you get Broad Street, that's no special assessment, right, we, we are working in a system where the state is fickle with grants and with money, and there's a lot of different factors, so, we're necessarily picking winners and losers, I think we just need to do that prudently, um, some places get grants, right, some, some places get state funding, um, and I wanna emphasize that point about, uh, responsibility, we just have an election, right, you got twelve, fifteen percent of all the registered voters chose you, I would be, if you wanna exercise the policy leadership of the mayor, which is really what I envision the mayor being, and bring forward proposals, and then that's what we deliberate and act upon, I think that would be actually, in a sense, the way to get the most public participation, the people chose you, you then present alternatives, you know, in consultation with the staff, and we could operate on this, in terms of what can practically be done, Councilman Bentley, I'll, I'll just offer it again, though I know it's not popular, I really think the fairest way to go would be to replace the special assessment money with a new millage that exceeds the millage cap, and it's, it's totally uniform, it follows the normal rules, we do have to get sixty, or sixty, is it a super majority, sixty or sixty percent to pass something above the millage cap, I believe it's two-thirds majority, but that would be totally open in the public, it would be completely uniform according to the normal tax standards, and we could just put this whole thing behind us, are you on the right street, are you on the wrong street, did you get a federal grant that's gonna cut down on the funding, are you on a state highway, it would just set all of those things aside, and we could just, um, have a, a fully uniform tax system.
What I did is, when I ran for, for election, I brought the fair committee to the voters, and they liked it, and that's why I brought it to the council, because that's what I ran on, and they voted me in, and a lot of people told me that they wanted that to happen, so, that's all I'm going by, and I, that's why I proposed it to the council, and, you know, I'll do whatever the council wants me to do, you know, but that, that's what I did run, so.
I tend to agree, though, with Councilman Soha, we already have the Public Services Committee, and I would think that whatever discussion would start there, um, so, are you looking at the fair committee making the recommendation to the Public Services Committee, and then they make the recommendation to council, because I would hate, I mean, you know, according to my list, Public Services include major streets, local streets, you know, things of that nature, so, I would think that they would have say in the matter, so would, would the fair committee then go to Public Sa- Services, and if so, then I agree with Mr. Soha a hundred percent, it just seems an extra redundant step, you know, so, you know, if, if this is something that, we already have a committee, we already have people on that committee, if we just let them say, okay, go out there and see what's available, see what's not available, do we need to tweak it here or there, I, I, I think we have these people on this committee to make that decision, and then come to council and say, this is what we think, and then have the whole council go from there.
Is that a motion?
No, well, we have more discussion.
Okay, alright. Councilman Stutel?
I admire what you want to do, everybody in the city wants the roads fixed, nobody in the city wants to pay for it, that's a dilemma I have, as far as picking winners and choosers, that's what we do for all of you in here, this council, nothing's fair, I mean, we have to make hard choices, hard decisions all the time, that's why we're like to do this, and we can't have a nice even system, it's, it's never gonna be even, it's never gonna be fair, I commend, you know, I applaud you for what you're trying to do, but I have to agree with the census here, that we have committees, that's what we're here for, that's what we're elected for, we don't need another thirty-eight people to tell us how to do this job, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, so the spirit of what you're wanting to do, and what the people want, is, I hear it, and what I would like to propose, and I don't know, is that we have a, um, town hall here about special assessments specifically, um, and open it up in this chamber, invite the entire community to come, voice their opinions, invite the city to come, present the whys, the hows, the whats, the ifs, um, let the people talk, we could, um, have Public Services here, at least, to, you know, engage and take that, and then take it to a special Public Services meeting, where again, the body would be invited to discuss it again, and then that way, I think, would satisfy this desire that you had on the campaign trail, of people to be engaged for this, uh, specific top, topic.
Councilman Palladino?
Thank you, yes, very good, Councilman Soha, if I could just add one thing, maybe a way to integrate these two ideas would be, technically request that TIFA, EDC, the college, a- any interested party, if they wanna come and present and say, here's how our institution, which is, you know, intimately connected to the city, interacts with this system, here's the benefits, here's the, you know, here's the repercussions of this for us, we could invite that as maybe a special part of that, right, if TIFA wants to have a, have a meeting to discuss this, and then bring their consensus as a body, that way we just use the committees that exist, but I think still get to the end that you're aiming at?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is just my two sentences, listening to all of your, your, your discussions, I love, I like the idea of Councilman Brunz, as the committee as a whole, because what we've seen over the last year is some things have gone to committee, and then the council want, other members of council that wanted to be more involved in that discussion, so we've got kind of stymied by some of the committee structures on important topics, right, um, it's just that, you know, three or four people talk about it and come here, and then, you know, two or three others wanna dig into it a little more, so we get kind of, we've gotten stymied a couple, a couple times on important topics, so, council as a whole might be a good idea, but, you know, doing the public meeting would be good, anyone who wants to attend, I think that's a compromise, I would say that I, I would suggest, as opposed to making it all about special assessments, that the first meeting we do have, we do talk about, um, the, the magnitude of the problem, and the components or, or the pieces that we have as a community to help solve, whether it's special assessments, a millage, uh, the various things, so that everyone knows, okay, we've got these half a dozen things to bring in revenue, and what we're trying to do is come up with the best match, and then if the public can see, you know, that this is a thoughtful process, and you, everyone's trying to do their best, you know, for the residents as well as to achieve the goal, you know, you, you might be able to get people to coalesce around the idea of, of how we move forward on that, as Councilman Stutel said, no one want, everyone wants the road fixed, their roads fixed, but no one really wants to pay for it, some have chosen to do that in order to get it done, but no, you know, no one really wants to pay extra when you ask them, hey, you know, you wanna pay five thousand dollars? Well, no, only if I have to, so, I, I think there's a, you know, you, there, there is a way to do this, that you get the most input from the residents, and, you know, all of council could be, uh, you know, part of that decision, so.
So, could we potentially then make a motion to have a committee in the whole meeting, that second weekend, that second week of December, that you had talked about, and then if people from the hospital, the college, TIFA, any, I mean, and the general public, wanna come to that committee in the whole meeting, they can, and we can start the process there, or do we have to vote on this first, then make the motion?
No, this is just, um, bringing the people forward to getting this going.
Then I, then I would, oh.
And then, Councilman Bentley?
No, uh, uh, I, I think we're all kind of moving in the same direction, and so I would suggest maybe we, a- and I appreciate, the, the clock is ticking, we need to do this quickly, and so I'm not suggesting this as a stalling tactic, but we, we just discussed a lot of things, so if we do send it to Public Services, maybe as soon as this week, so that we can, you know... so that we can, you know, coalesce around what we talked about right now and put it into some kind of resolution with staff, and then call for this meeting of the whole and the public. Because I think we're very close, but I don't think we're going to like. Unless, unless we just want to go ahead and skip that stuff. It seems prudent to.
Councilman Soha, why does public services need to meet before the meeting of the whole?
I guess it doesn't. I just.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Soha. We can as well just tell that tonight.
So, do I have a motion?
Then I would make a motion that we hold a committee of the whole meeting the second week of December, at a date that works best for all of us, to start the discussion on roads.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I got a motion by Councilman Flynn, a second by Councilor Morrissey, to put together a council of the whole for a meeting in the second week of December.
Oh, Councilman Soha, I'm sorry.
Can we just set the date to the eighth, the second Monday? Just sure.
Okay. Does it work for everybody?
I'll make it work.
Okay. At seven?
At seven o'clock, yep, right here.
Against the public a month or three weeks to, and they get to celebrate things.
So, I made my motion to create the eighth of December at seven P M. here in council chambers.
All right, second, all right, I have a motion. All right, so we've got a motion to make the council of the whole on December eighth at seven o'clock in council chambers. I got a second by Councilor Morrissey. May I have a roll call vote, City Clerk?
That was.
Oh.
A little discussion now.
Oh, you want a little discussion? I had it, all right.
Because I think it's a fine idea, but are we going to try to have a resolution? Like, what, is it just going to be a talk fest essentially? That's why I was kind of suggesting we go to committee to, like, give it parameters. Because right now, it just seems like, well, there's going to be nine of us, and so, you know, it's just a question.
Councilman, or City, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor Sessions, Councilman Bentley. This is what I would envision doing if council wants me to do something different, that the staff would put together a presentation of the data, of where we stand. Like, for example, I can tell you that there's been independent data done that shows that we have the worst roads in the state of what community our size. And we can present that information, of where we stand, how much roads we have to fix. You know, the engineering data that we've presented before. And then we can go from that and choose these are our funding options, you know, everything. You know, and if council or others have proposals that, you know, they can, it can be an interactive discussion. And then we can throw them out there, even maybe have a whiteboard and write them down, so that we, you know, keep track of them. And then discuss them all, if we need to go back and research some. You know, we can do that, and then subsequently decide if we have another meeting to actually, you know, flesh out, you know, a direction. That's what I would see, and that's okay with council.
Sounds great, I'm ready to vote.
All right. Councilman.
I just have a quick comment, and that is that special assessment districts are not taken from one person and given to another, and that I got an increase in my property values, which probably far exceeded the money that I spent on the special assistant, special assessment district. So, I just wanted to, as an economist, sort of throw that in.
Thank you. All right. Any more council discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, City Clerk, please?
Councilperson Stutel.
Yes.
Wolfram.
Yes.
Galladino.
Yes.
Mayor Sessions.
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley.
Yes.
Brunz.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
And Soha.
Yes.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the discussion. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're going to go on to new business, electric, water, sewer costs and services study. City Manager Mackey.
Thanks, Mayor Sessions. So, this pertains to the electric, water, and sewer departments. The BPU's last cost of service studies were done in the spring of twenty twenty-two, which was data from the end of twenty-one, by Utility Financial Solutions. Given the market changes over the last several years, coming out of COVID and the spike of equipment pricing and length of time, the BPU board and staff felt it was important to update our cost of service models, ensure that BPU rate structures are appropriate and in line with the utilities' needs. We went back to U F S to ask them to give us pricing to update and rework those cost of service models for the electric, the water, and the sewer departments. And the pricing that you have in your packet is there. The Finance Director has reviewed this pricing, and she works throughout the state and believes that the pricing is good. Typically, one of these is about thirty thousand dollars, which we see for the electric because it's a unique utility. For water and sewer, we were able to get the price down because they kind of complement one another. Now, a couple of things, again, as we said, the market has changed since we have done the previous study. We're through COVID, and we do have a number of large capital projects that we've been working on. So, that, those expenditures and expenditures and capital improvements for the future need to be factored into the rates. Also, one of the things just for council to understand is when we establish rates or rate increases in reserves, they all have to be defensible if we're sued. If someone comes in and attempts to sue us and say our rates are too high or out of line, we have to be able to defend our rate structure. This process actually does that. They're a third party, again, that we can use, and they do these studies all over the state and other utilities, just like ours. And their data is very defensible. So, with that, we're, the BPU board and the staff are asking council to approve the cost of service studies plus the contingencies for an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars to U F S and authorize the city manager to execute the associated agreements.
Council questions for City Manager Mackey. Councilman Flynn.
Just to be clear, does this, since you brought it up, does this mean that if we have this done, something done, that there will be an update on rates? Or are we looking at keeping the rates pretty much where they are?
So, what comes out of this is, and this is what came out of the last study. So, they actually present a rate structure based on a reserve amount that's, a reserve amount that's common within the industries. And so, we target those as part of our financial system to rule our rates. Typically, we'll see a two percent increase, or you'll see sometimes double digits for public utilities like consumers and others. You know, they've had over ten.
Oh, right.
Yeah, where we've been at one, two. We have had in water and sewer, which were led to get kind of off base a few years back. We had had some larger increases there, but that's because we passed a nine million dollar bond to fund the sewer treatment plant. And we had, for the bonding companies, had to show a certain amount of revenue in reserves. So, on electric side, it's been very low, one, two percent, and that's been pretty common. Water and sewer have been about five percent. We've had, we have had ten, but that was because their rates were allowed to get out of whack. But, so it does, but on water and sewer, when you look at, it could be ten percent or five percent, and it might be two dollars. So, you have to look at what the total amount is. Yes, they give us a structure, and council can adopt it or not, and in the past, they have. Okay, thank you.
Any more question?
Is this necessary from an administrative standpoint? Does BPU know how much it needs to increase its rates? Is this a tool of legal defense, or do you need this information?
This information is actually very important to us.
Yes, okay.
Councilman Bellin.
Not to exceed seventy thousand, which should. And when was the last time this was done?
Spring of twenty twenty-two, with data from the end of twenty-one.
Councilman Soha. Does the BPU pay for this?
The individual departments do, yes. So, this is a BPU expenditure from within their own departments.
Any more council discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I have a, or may I entertain a motion to approve the C O S. studies plus contingencies in the amount of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars with U F S. authorization, authorize the city manager to execute the associated agreements?
So moved. Support.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Wolfram, supported by Councilman Flynn. Any more council discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, City Clerk, please?
Yes, Councilperson Wolfram.
Yes.
Galladino.
Yes.
Mayor Sessions.
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley.
Yes.
Brunz.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
And Stutel.
Yes.
That's nine zero, it's approved.
All right, thank you. Now, moving to new business, Tall Grass Energy Project. City Manager Mackey.
Thank you, Mayor Sessions. So, the next two, the Tall Grass Energy Project and the Curserge Solar Project are two energy projects that we're considering for energy capacity and REX, the two projects for our energy portfolio. Now, we do have Mr. Paul Beckhues in here with us. He's with, he's a senior vice president of AMP Power Supply, and actually, he's part of the gentleman who actually looks at different communities' energy portfolios and makes a recommendation to them whether they should be in a project and how much they should be in a particular project. And there's criteria for all of that. We will not need to go into closed session. That's typically done if you're negotiating pricing. We've negotiated the pricing, and it's in the agreements that you have in front of you, so we don't have to go into closed session. But I would like to ask Mr. Beckhues in the company and actually talk about, you know, the things that they look at, or his department looks at when making a recommendation to the community. Now, some of you might know, Paul retired from the city of Coldwater. He was their BPU director and then went to AMP. So, Paul's a wealth of knowledge, and he can pretty much answer everything you got. So, with that, Paul, can you just kind of go through what your department looks at and why this is important? One, from the energy standpoint, but also if you could touch on the requirements we have in place through the legislature requiring us to amp our green energy.
Right, my pleasure, thank you. A pleasure to be here tonight and talk through these. So, there's two projects we've recommended for the city of Hillsdale, along with other members of AMP that are located in Michigan, particularly Coldwater, Clinton, and Marshall. Those being the Tall Grass Power Purchase Agreement and the Curseed Solar Power Purchase Agreement. Tall Grass is a waste-to-heat project. So, it's a facility that will take heat off of gas compressor stations, convert that into energy. And so, from a power supply perspective, it's a resource that will operate, which is referred to as a baseload resource, so seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. The solar project, just that solar, remember, there's, I think, in aggregate, eight, seven or eight solar projects located throughout the state of Michigan. So, when we evaluate our members' power supply, we identify different levels of need. So, base energy supply, that's the energy you need twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And then what's referred to as intermediate power supply, which is typically five by sixteen. So, that's Monday through Friday, seven A M. to eleven P M. And then peak energy, which are those hours, particularly in this part of the country in the summertime, when you have your air conditioners and the high heating level. So, from Hillsdale's perspective, the recommendations here for the Tall Grass fit the need for that baseload resource. And the solar fits the need for those peaking resources. That's on the energy side. In the state of Michigan, there's two requirements that load-serving entities, utilities, have. One is a renewable energy mandate that's currently at fifteen percent, but ratchets up here by twenty thirty to twenty percent, and then subsequently out to twenty forty, on a path to a hundred percent. Both these projects, the solar particularly provides renewable energy credits to meet that, those needs. And the Tall Grass project does not meet the, the renewable energy credits are qualified in Ohio. They're not qualified in Michigan. But they would be sold and then purchased, we would purchase back renewable energy credits in the state of Michigan to meet those requirements for that project. So, that's two benefits for both those projects. The other requirement is capacity. So, each load-serving entity is required to show four years in advance that they meet their capacity requirements. It's a filing that we do on behalf of the Michigan members with the Public Service Commission. And so, both of these projects also provide capacity to meet those needs. That market particularly has seen a significant increase in pricing, at least doubled in the last two years. So, these, both these projects are, would be hedges to the exposure in that market to meet those needs. So, those are the, that's the high-level overlay of both of these projects that fit that right into the city.
Paul, could you just touch on the actual pricing level?
Sure.
They, I know they, the two projects are fairly comparable, eight dollars for the Curserge.
Yeah.
And then, over the fifteen-year period, could you talk about the market?
Sure.
What you're seeing?
Yep, so, I'll start with Tall Grass. So, Tall Grass, again, is a baseload resource. That is a, that pricing structure, so it's got a two percent escalator. It starts out at sixty, sixty-eight fifty for the first year, and then escalates two percent over years, fifteen, it's fifteen-year term. So, when you cost average that out over the period, it's about seventy-nine dollars a megawatt hour. Current market for seven by twenty-four power is just under sixty dollars a megawatt hour. That's energy only. When you factor in the renewable energy credits, that's about four dollars worth of value, and the capacity is about eleven dollars per megawatt hour of values. When you add those together, that's fifteen dollars a megawatt hour that discounts off that energy price, because you get all three attributes for that price. So, that puts that project right in line with where the current forward markets are for energy only. And then on the, on the solar project, the Curseed project, that's a fixed price, eighty dollars per megawatt hour for the term. That's on-peak energy, so that market right now for on-peak energy, particularly, we look at it in the summer months because that's, one, when the solar generates the most energy, and two, that's typically where we see the highest prices. The forward markets for the on-peak energy is in the seventy, seventy-two dollar range right now. So, again, when you look at the. So again, when you look at the current market and the capacity value and the renewable energy credit value that that brings, that puts both projects right in line with where you would be in the market, uh, exposed to just the energy side of things.
Any more council questions? Councilman Flynn.
So if we pass both of these, sir, um, tonight, this would get us to that twenty percent renewable for the, for Hillsdale's VPU?
Yeah, so currently for the, uh, for the, the, the upcoming years, so the next couple of years, but that hatchets up year-over-year. Um, so there, there would be a, a period of time, you know, in the near future where we need to look at some other alternatives, but this would provide, uh, uh, the, the front end of the need.
Okay.
Councilman Sol, a couple of questions. What happens if, um, in, institution changes and lands in next year and the renewable energies mandate is rescinded? And, um, we no longer have the requirement to, uh, not to be punished for not having, uh, hundred percent renewable energy as our own private utility? Are we able to, um, and how, do we have an escape clause?
Well, these, they, and that's one, you know, both of these would, are not meeting those long-term requirements. It's really where we're at today. So there's not a, uh, abundant amount of renewable energy credits that you would, would, you would be exposed to with these projects. There is a market there, we can sell them, you get that revenue back to offset the price. But there, um, again, there are, there are resource, uh, capacity. The real value is the capacity in the energy, the hedge that they, the projects provide to the, to the market, what you would be exposed in the market. Renewable energy piece of it, from a financial perspective, is a pretty small component currently. That, that markets around three to four dollars a megawatt hour.
So, um, how does this compare to coal-powered energy or natural gas-powered energy or nuclear power in megawatt hour pricing?
So, from a resource perspective, um, you know, new, from a new resource perspective, so these are new, new resources. If you're to build a natural gas plant today, that pricing is, again, depending on natural, pricing natural gas, uh, with the debt and everything that's associated with that, you're in the range of, you know, probably in the range of seventy to eighty dollars a megawatt hour for a new resource.
Mr. Mackey, what, what do we pay on the open market for naturally, right now, approximately? For coal power, natural gas power?
Well, Paul, you could, you could probably answer this because you see this daily. But the assets that were involved in our natural gas, like down at the AMP asset, Fremont.
Right.
That's thirty to four, say forty dollars?
That's, that's, uh, that's the energy component only.
Yes.
The all-in cost of the debt services, fifty, fifty, around fifty dollars a megawatt hour. So again, when you, when you look at the, the resources the city currently has, these are, these are, you know, a very small component of the overall portfolio. When I, these market prices that I referenced, the market is a, a, a very diverse portfolio of lots of different generating resources, nuclear, coal, natural gas, wind, solar. But the, the generators selling to the market and the pricing that I referenced in that sixty-dollar, the current, the current price point for, uh, seven by twenty-four, um, market power, which would be relative to a nuclear resource or a coal resource, um, natural gas, particularly also because natural gas, uh, there's a lot of that in the market right now, is around that sixty dollars.
Yeah, I saw the last one, the numbers were like fifty, it's a change for that.
Yeah, it's up to, we, we see that, we, we look at it every day. And today, you know, we just got the market update, sixty dollars, if you were to go out and buy, do a deal today.
It is important to mention that we got into those projects years ago before the, you know, uh, so they've been around quite a while.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow up, so you're asking us to approve, um, rates that are going to go up thirty percent in the next fifteen years? Have they gone up thirty percent in the last fifteen years? The electricity limits for the consumers here in Hillsdale.
I guess I'm not sure where, where you, where coming up with that the rates are going to go up thirty.
Sixty-eight ninety, two percent a year for fifteen years, up to ninety-two ninety, that's for the Tall Grass. Eighty bucks per kilowatt hour to start for the solar, up to one-hundred and ten.
Two percent, you're talking a two percent increase over fifteen years? Two percent a year?
A year, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I said, in thirteen, in fifteen years, we're asking, we're, we're going to have a thirty percent increase in our rates. And I was just curious if that has been true over time? That the rates have gone that much in that amount of time?
Typically, our rates, um, do go up, uh, where we have a schedule and all the, the, uh, the options that we purchase into, there is a clause in there to increase. Two percent is actually a pretty fair annual increase. I don't know, Paul, what do you?
I, I, I think that the, the point I would make is that if, uh, if you look at the overall portfolio for, uh, the city and, and again, I don't know if these, these, these graph, these presentations were, were, um, available to you or not, but, um, in, in this case, uh, the, the city uses roughly about a hundred and thirty thousand megawatt hours per year. And these two projects would be, on an annual basis, um, roughly thirty thousand megawatt hours per year. So it's a fairly small percentage of overall power supply cost. So from a cost average perspective, um, it's, on the wholesale side, it's, it's relatively, um, um, would, would not affect the wholesale rates because without these projects, you would be exposed to the market, which is also at this, at these levels that these projects are currently, or these, uh, pricing for the PPAs are currently at.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this, I just, would you recommend this if it wasn't mandated by the state?
Yes.
You would?
Yes.
You think that this is a really viable, long-term source of alternative power?
Well, it's fifteen years, so it's relative and, and the power supply, we're, well, is not, I would consider it long-term. It's a hedge and it's a, it's a, provides diversification to, to the city's portfolio that allows for, um, you know, for example, there, the city's very, uh, got a firm out of the, our, the AMP Fremont Energy, which is a, a natural gas unit. So the rates there are, are significantly impacted by the cost of natural gas. So if natural gas goes up, then the wholesale rate from that unit goes up. So with the, with a diversification of, of the resources it provides, a hedge to some of that fuel risk that you would otherwise maybe expose to.
Um, Mayor Rotan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you said the city's total capacity is a hundred and thirty thousand megawatt hours here?
Mm-hmm, roughly.
And this project, these two projects are thirty thousand?
Roughly.
That, that's, isn't that more than twenty percent of the total? That seems fairly large.
Well, it's, yeah, and again, I don't know if these presentations, these power supply graph stacks that we provide, um, shows that, um, and again, these are, these, this is on an, on an annual basis of the context of this is, uh, over, twelve months, not on a monthly basis. So for example, the solar would not provide much energy in the wintertime. That's where the, the energy is. You're going to get the most during the summertime, costs are high. So from an overall portfolio perspective, it's, it leaves the, the city with roughly, and again, these are based on forecasts, low growth, um, you know, we don't have any low growth factor in here. It's really, it's zero. But it leaves the, the city exposed to around, again, ten percent, uh, or ten, ten thousand megawatt hours of exposure to the market. Without that, you're, you're roughly, you know, eighty thousand to, so you're about fifty thousand megawatt hours exposed to the market.
Okay.
So.
So it's forty thousand then? Sorry, I'm not, what's the difference between the exposure and the thirty thousand that this is adding?
Yeah, so what, the current, the current, um, power supply needs in the city is a hundred and thirty thousand. With your current assets, you have roughly eighty thousand megawatt hours, okay? So fifty thousand megawatt hours is the difference. The two of these make up roughly, and again, I'm eyeballing this off of a graph right now, so. These are, it's roughly, you know, uh, eighty to one-ten, okay? So thirty thousand megawatt hours. So that leaves about twenty thousand exposed to the market.
Okay, that ten thousand was throwing me off. Okay, thank you. So the total, it's sixty-eight fifty, that is locked in only for a year. There's two percent on the thermal project. The eighty dollars for solar is locked in for twenty years.
Fifteen, or twenty, yeah, excuse me, I'm lost.
Twenty, contract for twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
So the solar will actually cost less long-term than the thermal?
Yes. Well, on a cost-average basis, it, it's about the same.
Oh, right, because you're paying less, I see.
Right.
Okay. So what, what is our, did we get an answer? What is our current mega, per megawatt hour average for, I don't know, the last year, the last six months? On the open market?
On, on the market?
Or maybe, uh, with our own projects that we've entered into as well, factored in?
Yes, uh, so on our energy, on our bill we receive every month.
You're not on, Mr. Mackey, thank you.
On our bill we receive every month, we're about eight cents, uh, I always get confused with the numbers.
Yeah, it's eighty dollars, again, going off the top of my head, but eighty to eighty-five dollars a megawatt hour. There's also.
Yes, and we sell to our consumer, our, our customers, uh, for about thirteen cents or, uh, a hundred and thirty dollars, which is substantially less than consumers', um...
Twenty?
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty, two hundred dollars megawatt hour, twenty cents kilowatt hour consumer rate.
Oh, okay, so the markup is that large?
Consumers.
Sixty percent markup for ours and more than double for consumers?
That's on the retail, yeah, retail side, yeah.
And then I was a bit confused about the renewable energy. Are we, with these projects, are we getting closer to that goal? Because you said the geo, the, the thermal is not included, but we can have a workaround with Ohio.
Right.
I thought earlier we heard that thermal was part of the state's slate of options for the green energy credits.
So that, that currently is not part, part of the, um, the state's, um, allowable resources, but, um, there, there are numbers that, a number of folks feel that it should be because it is, is green and, uh, we have lobbyists through our eight associations that feel that we should, we should take that up with the state and get them to include it.
Yes, definitely. This, of all the types of energy, that's the one I'm, I would like to see the most of. So in terms of where, where are we at now with our green energy credits for meeting that goal? What percentage?
So, so we are at eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent, and what would this bring us to?
I don't know the exact percentage, but, um, one thing I will, I will correct, actually, the thirty, unless it's been changed, Paul, it's, we have, we have fifty percent. Did it come down?
I think it's, it, it probably is fifty, yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm going off.
By twenty-four to fifty percent, or?
It's fifty percent in twenty-thirty, and then it goes up to sixty, uh, I, I looked earlier today, that's why I didn't know. Uh, sixty percent in twenty-thirty-five and then a hundred percent according to the current man, uh, s, um, state requirements, a hundred percent in twenty-fourty. We're at eighteen percent.
And do you know what the, uh, average is for the main consumers, DT, uh, versus municipalities, uh, as a whole? Or where do we, where do we fall in that?
No, I, I don't know where we fall, but in between, you said where consumers is to where we are?
Yeah, and just other municipally-owned utilities, what percentage are, are they at? Is there an average that, that places are on pace to have right now?
Well.
I just know our members and they're all within the fifteen to twenty percent range based on, again, the current resources with the hydro projects that they participate, uh, through AMP in and then other resources that we have.
So we're right in that?
Right, right there, we're, 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 um, typical AMP members are.
Does your org, organization think that the twenty-thirty goals can be met?
Yep, yes, um, and that's part of the strategy behind this, and that's, good, there's some complexities around that, that, those requirements, there's, um, uh, the, the REX don't, they have a five-year shelf life. So you can, a REX generator today still qualifies for requirements in twenty-thirty. So what that allows you to do is to be able to, um, if you have excess REX currently, be able to build those up to meet those future needs. And that's what we have worked through with this strategy and with the filing that's done with the state, is to work through that, uh, that process to, to make sure that, one, to the gentleman's point over here, if the rules change, we don't have too many resources in place that we would, otherwise wouldn't need if the rules changed on the requirements. But at the same time, give us, give us a, an off-ramp to be able to procure the REX in a manner that's most cost-effective. Some of that is through projects like this. We also have the ability to just go out and purchase renewable energy credits without any other, uh, power supply attributes related to it.
So this will most likely have to be done with purchasing rather than?
That's the plan. It's the majority of it's going to be through purchase.
Okay, and then on the eighteen percent, did you have a ballpark of how much this increases it to?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
We can, I can get that to you there. It's, again, we, we factored these, uh, we factored the need for the REX into the plan. Whether it comes from a resource like this or not, we're, or we purchased them, they're, they're, they're on track, we're on track to meet the requirements. We're, the, the first required of the new statute, first filing, would happen this year, which is the fifteen percent, which has been what we have been at for a number of years. And then these, this project along with the other purchasing strategies, now we would start to leg up into the higher requirements.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Flynn.
Paul, are there penalties if we don't get up to that twenty percent?
There's not a direct financial penalty, penalty. The way the legislation is, um, is drafted is that it would come through a, uh, a judicial proceeding that a customer of the utility would file. Through the state would ultimately come back through the Attorney General's office through a, through a, uh, judicial proceeding. Oh, thank you.
Any more council discussion, questions? Paul? Yes, Councilman Sol.
Forgive me for making this go on, but, um, I fully expect this to pass, but on, on principle, I, um, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't like being forced by the state to do this. I don't like their hands in our cookie jar at this level. It just really frustrates me. And I, I despise these, these, um, solar farms that have taken up our tillable land. I don't understand why we think that's so important. It's ugly, um, and... Um, I don't understand why we think that's so important, it's ugly, um, and inefficient, you know? tornado, hailstorm, something could very easily just destroy them, and then what, you know? So it happened down in Texas at a, an enormous scale, uh, California just shut down a solar farm that destroyed the desert. If you drive from, uh, Phoenix to LA, now through the desert, there's a whole solar farm on hundreds and hundreds of acres that's turned off. Um, I, I, I hate this, I totally hate it.
Yeah, Councilman Bellamy.
I agree, again, agree with, uh, Councilman Soha, and I will be voting no on the solar part, for sure. And any other thing with half solar in it, no.
Councilman Flynn.
I would make a motion that, uh, we approve the Tall Grass Energy Project. So we have to do these one at a time, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so I make a motion that we approve the Tall Grass Energy Project.
Okay, your second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Morrissey, so there's a councilman, or a motion to approve the Tall Grass by Councilman Flynn, and also by Councilman Morrissey, a second, um, any more discussions, Councilman Soha?
Mr. Mackey, would we be entertaining this if we weren't required to this Tall Grass one?
Yes. Okay, any more council discussion? Seem now may I roll call vote City Clerk Price?
Yes, Councilmember Paladino?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
Councilmember Bentley?
Yes.
Bruns?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stu Chol?
Yes.
And Wolfram?
Yes.
It's nine zero approved, resolution three-six-five-seven.
Alright, may I have a, um, entertain a motion to approve the Cursage Solar Power Purchase Agreement and the associated emergency schedule and the M S C P supplemental agreement?
So who?
Have a second.
Support.
Support, alright, I have a motion by Councilman Flynn, supported by Councilman Stu Chol, may I have a roll call, vote City Clerk Price?
Yes, Mayor, uh, Sessions?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
No.
Bruns?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Uh, Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
No.
Stu Chol?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Paladino?
No.
Five-four, that's approved.
Okay, thank you. Alright, now we'll move into appointments, um, for the Housing Commission, Kami Emerson, Tiffle Board, Felicia Ray Finch, and Tiffle Board, Chris Sumner. We can do these individually or all at one time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, do you want to mention that I bumped into, uh, uh, Mr. Sumner on the way in, he was on the way out. He apologizes for not being here this evening, but as on his, uh, application, he is a member of the Hillsdale School Board, and they're meeting tonight as well. So he's at the school board, but he apologizes for not being able to be here, are any questions anybody might have?
Thank you, um, any, yes, Councilman Bellamy?
I suggest we do these individually, and I move to, to accept, uh, Mr. Sumner's appointment to, to, uh...
Support, okay, alright, I got, okay, so we'll do, um, to, Mr. Sumner's, alright, so we have a motion to approve, um, by Councilman Bentley and supported by Councilman Morrissey, um, may I have a roll call, vote City Clerk Price?
Yes, Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Bruns?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stu Chol?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Uh, Paladino?
Yes.
And Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
It's nine zero approved.
Alright, now we will go on to the appointment of Housing Commission, Kami Emerson. Yeah, any motion?
So who?
Okay, do I have a support? Okay, Councilman Soha, okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Flynn, and a second by Councilman Soha to approve Housing Commission Kami Emerson, I may have a roll call, vote City Clerk Price?
Yes.
Alright, discussion.
Oh, you mean discussion, true.
Yeah, I was just gonna point out that, uh, her application said Brooklyn, Michigan, and while, uh, out of the city is one thing, I think, if you own a business, I, I would like to see, uh, at least our boards and committees be filled by county residents.
Okay.
City Manager Mackey.
Um, so on this particular, on the Housing Commission, this is, um, uh, actually a city manager appointment by charter. Um, that being said, um, uh, the Housing Commission Director brought Kami forward, as you can see in the bio, um, we had looked for, uh, um, and tried to find candidate for, for a while, this is the replacement of Dennis Wayne Scott, um, who passed away. So that being said, um, um, I did look at the fact that she was from Brooklyn, but I looked at what she does as an agency, you know, uh, for her appointments, with the Wellwise Service Agency, um, aging, um, and the Community Transition Services Program, and feel that, uh, her, her experience there would lend well to the Housing Commission as they deal, you know, with our housing project is for low-income folks who she deals, works with on a daily basis, that's why I selected her.
Okay.
Thank you there, um, Mr. Mackey, did you say that Amy, that they recommended her?
Yes.
So Amy's, she runs the, as a Housing Commission Department, so she's a truster judge, just if that helps?
I, yeah, I, yeah, I have no reason to doubt her judgment, just, uh, I, I think we are a city, we have, uh, certain privileges that come with city residents, and I think one of those is spending the money that comes to the city.
Thank you. Any more council, Councilman Soha?
And also just for informational purposes, I know that they've had open seats for extended periods of time in this particular committee, and it's fighting for people to serve, um, I don't know, having a woman willing to serve seems, even if she's from, um, uh, it's a good point, I, um...
Okay, any more council discussion? Councilman Morrissey?
Yeah, I agree in principle with Councilman, uh, Pope Tim Bentley, but if it's a practical matter, if we can't find anybody, then I guess we should do it.
Okay, any more council discussion?
Seem now you have a motion on the floor by Councilman Flynn, supported by Councilman Soha, may I have a roll call, vote City Clerk Price?
Yes, Councilperson Bruns?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stu Chol?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Paladino?
No.
Uh, was it Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
And Councilperson Bentley?
No.
Five-four, that's approved.
Alright, thank you, uh, next is the last appointment to...
Six-three, sixty-three.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Okay, uh, last appointment is to Tiffle Board, what, oh, Councilman Flynn?
I just wanted to make sure she was called.
Okay.
I have five-four.
Bentley Bruns, me.
Bentley Bruns?
Oh, you.
Paladino? Six-three, for, yes, correct?
Yes.
Yes, excuse me.
Alright, last appointment is for the Tiffle Board, it's for Felicia Ray Finch, um, is there any council discussion? The Councilman, um, Paladino, or Mayor Pro Tem, Paladino?
Thank you, um, again, not a city resident, but she owns a business, I would, uh, ask if you could maybe see if you could find someone from the residential areas in the Tiffle District, uh, for future appointments.
Okay. Councilman Stu Chol?
Yeah, I, I'll just say a little thing about Felicia, she has said Tiffle has had a leader, she's also part of the beautification committee, I mean, she's out there in the cold, putting up Christmas decorations, make things look good, I mean, she may live outside the city, but she very much loves the city, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any more council discussion? Seem now, may, may, entertain a motion for Felicia Ray Finch to be on the Tiffle Board, so... So who I got? Alright, I got, Councilman Soha, supported by Councilman Stu Chol, any more council discussion? Seem now, may I have a roll call, vote City Clerk Price?
Yes, Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stu Chol?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Paladino?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
And Bruns?
Yes.
It's nine zero, approved.
Alright, thank you, alright, now we will move into public, or general public comment, anything, um, podium's open, um, for three minutes each, and please state your name and your address.
Check, proclaim fourteen forty-five, South Plunder. These are kind of quotes, I guess, from the collegiate about the election, um... It talks about groups, uh, one of the mayoral candidates talks about groups and about his groups, and, and I just, I think, people shouldn't be talking or voting in groups, they should be on what the people want. It's got nothing to do with your little group or whatever you wanna call it, um, and in this, it says that, um, um... They're gonna start campaigning, of course, in January, um, it looks like everybody on council, there's gonna be a lot of empty seats, they're planning on filling all those seats, so then when you're seeing a vote like tonight, it, it's got nothing to do with the people in the city, it's got to do with our little group, and we're all gonna vote the same. It, it, and I don't know if you guys see it, but it's, it's just not representing the people of the city. It's, it's representing the people, personal issues, and that's not how a public, uh, person representing should be of the people in the, in the city. And, um, one thing, and this is none to get Mr. Soha, but, um, there was a meeting in Heath's Park about someone almost getting hit on the street here, or where he almost hit someone when they opened their door, and then someone in the audience had fifteen people from his ward that had said, "We don't want that." Well, fifteen people is not any percent of his ward, but it did change his vote, and I don't, I don't think that's right. If you're gonna represent the people, represent the people, not a very small minority of the people. And I just, it kinda remembers, reminds me of history, and a couple of famous people, and you, well, I'm not gonna say famous, a couple of well-known names in Europe during the thirties and the forties, and what they tried to do, and, of course, it didn't work out. One of them, of course, he was in Germany, and the other one was in Italy, and, you know, but that never worked out, thank God, for us and everybody else involved, but it, it shouldn't be, it's like Republican Democrats, no, it's the people, the people need to work together. You all need to get along, and you all need to support the people that are paying the taxes in the city. It should have nothing to do with your personal agenda whatsoever, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any more, um, general public comment? Seem now, close the podium, and we'll go into the City Managers' Report.
Uh, Mayor, I am going to pass on the report tonight, and I'll just take questions from council if there are any.
Are there any questions from City Manager Mackey? Seem now, okay, seem now, go into council comment.
Councilman Soha, hold on, continue with Morrissey.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to thank, uh, both of the mayoral candidates this year, um, for standing up and, uh, running for mayor. Uh, both of you got ripped at quite a bit during this long campaign, and, uh, you both took, took the heat, so I appreciate both of you for doing that. Not everybody is capable or willing to do that, and, uh, so, so I think you deserve some credit, both of you for doing that. The other thing is, uh, as I discussed with Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Paladino before the meeting, this seat that I occupy is the traditional seat for the Mayor Pro Tem, I'm perfectly willing to give it up. I used to be in Councilman Bentley's seat, in fact, uh, Count, uh, Mayor, Mayor Sessions was the mayor in those days. I took the seat, replacing Pat Flattery, who was the Mayor Pro Tem at that time, and, uh, if, uh, you can sit there or sit here, I, I defer to your judgment at the next meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morrissey, any more council discussion, Councilman Soha?
It was said earlier today that nobody wants to pay for the roads, and I just wanted to remind council that there are at least two of us on this august body that did volunteer to pay for the roads, so...
Councilman Bellamy?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I have a few things to say, uh, starting with Dr. Morrissey, thank you for your kind words. Uh, it was a long and sometimes rough, uh, election, and I would like to congratulate you, Mayor, uh, for your, your win. Uh, but I, I would also like to note that, uh, you wouldn't meet me in a public forum, so forgive me if I bring it up here for the first and last time. Uh, you ran on negativity and chain of command, uh, can you say a few words about the chain of command, please?
Sure.
If you like?
Yes, um, I have a new email, it's mayor underscore scott underscore sessions at yahoo dot com, and I would like the council to email me and go through me, and also, um, copy, um, City Manager Mackey and include him in the emails to go through both of us, and that's where I'd like to go, council to go through me and the city manager.
Could you repeat?
Yep, it's mayor underscore scott underscore sessions at yahoo dot com.
Thank you.
And that's where I'd like the chain of command to be in.
So, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I will not be following the chain of command. Generally, we all email each other to let us know what they're, we're doing, and, uh, I, I don't know that any of us have ever stepped on, uh, City Manager Mackey's toes, as far as he's the executive, he's the boss of his staff, so there, there hasn't, that's not the issue. And as far as the negativity, uh, well, first, first let me, uh, thank, congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Paladino for filling in for Mr. Stockford for the year, he did a fine job, and he would've done a fine job for another year, and we wouldn't have had to go through this election, and that would've been my preference, uh, so thank you, Josh, um... But the negativity that's been spewed against us, Josh and me, I think in particular, uh, as recently as three minutes ago from the podium, that we're fascists or something, um, and then your campaign was run on negativity, and I, I didn't get to answer those calls about that. I would suggest to the community at large, and the, the media, and the civic organizations, that they expect, if not demand, that there are public forums where the mayoral candidates meet in face-to-face and have discussions, so, so that the people can make an informed decision, instead of surrogates, uh, swinging negativity. Uh, I reject that there was negativity for the previous year under, uh, Mayor Pro Tem's tenure, and the, the whole narrative, I would challenge you rhetorically to name the five bodies that... the the whole narrative, I would challenge you rhetorically to name the five bodies that he or I caused. I reject, I reject all five of them as being caused by either one of us. The BPU guys in particular, who had no interaction with, I had no interaction with the engineer. And to begin it all with the uh where the negativity started, I would just suggest, this will be the only time I use the chain of command, I would suggest you ask your City Manager who's Airport Steve is.
Thank you, Councilman Bellamy, I appreciate that. Um, I uh, I was down, oh, Councilman Stu Chol?
Just just a small comment. I have, seventy years old, see a lot of campaigns in my life, I have never seen one that was a negative.
What council comments? Um, I just, I wanna thank the people of Hillsdale for coming out and voting, um, I appreciate it. Councilman Morrissey saying that, I I actually can't, thank you for saying that, Councilman Bellamy. I was at, I I was actually in the public every single Saturday for three hours, and I only saw you down there a couple times. You know, you could come see me, you know, there you go, but you didn't. So, you know, and also, the negativity came from the resignations of five different people from the city of Hillsdale. That's where the negativity came from, it was in the resignation statements. So, that's all I put together. That's where I ran my campaign on, because there was negativity there. I'm sorry if you don't see that, I did. Um, but thank you for running against me, I appreciate that, you know, and and the campaign you ran, appreciate that. Thank you all, everyone, you know, in the city of Hillsdale, you know, I I I love this community, I do. It's the best community I've been in my life, so, thank you all. Yes.
Um, the fifth resignation, there was no hint or mention of negativity, so at most you got four, and I would quibble with each of the four. Uh, as far as meeting at the farmer's market, yes, we did do that through the summer until the primary and the road diet business, when you were on road diet, when you were on site with the road diet, which you know, maybe we'll revisit. Um, but a public forum, we're we're held accountable for our words with cameras and the public, not just a discussion. Uh, we have had pleasant discussions about running that. Every time I've seen you, we agree each other horribly, so that's not the issue. The issue is accountability and transparency for the voters.
I was there, I'm sorry. I was out there every Saturday for three hours, you know, I made twenty-eight appearances in public, so there I was. I can count, but that's enough, okay? Yes. Councilman Flynn?
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Uh, thank you very much. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, I got a councilman, or a motion by Councilman Flynn to um to end the meeting and counsel, and supported by Councilman Morrissey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion pin, no?
I said no.
Okay.
I just want a roll call.
Okay, let's have a roll call, vote City Clerk Price.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
No.
Stu Chol?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Palladino?
No.
Mayor Sessions?
Yes.
Uh, Councilperson Bentley?
To adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
No?
Bruns?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Five four, adjourned.
All right, thank you.